Twenty twenty three town council meeting at seven thirteen P M. Everyone please rise. The lunch will begin, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can be seated. Proportions and presentations. We have one for us for Black History Month, so I'll leave that in the record. So whereas the town of Talon celebrates the cultural, spiritual, economic, and political contributions made by the black community to the town, state, nation, and world. And whereas this nation was founded upon and continues to be guided by principles of equality, that each individual has the rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each individual shall be granted the full protection of the law. And whereas the town of Talon acknowledges the challenges, injustices, and oppression faced by black citizens, that we as a community must continuously strive to eliminate ongoing challenges, injustices, and oppression. And whereas through surviving centuries of struggle and prolonged hardship rooted in slavery, which serves in the light to our nation's great history, that black citizens have overcome and claimed these long overdue rights. And whereas in nineteen seventy six, President Gerald Ford first recognized the Empire Month of February as Black History Month, an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of black Americans, their struggles through slavery and prejudice, their perseverance in battles of freedom and equality, and the gifts of freedom, this is an opportunity they have bestowed on future generations. And whereas we as a community must not only celebrate the contributions of black Americans, but recognize and learn from the path and justices of slavery and prejudice to better support and protect the rights of black Americans, which in doing so together builds more prosperous and equitable future for all town residents. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, chair of the Talon Town Council. On behalf of the town council and community at large, I'm proud to honor and celebrate the contributions of black individuals, families, and businesses past, present, and future. Welcome back, black residents of the town and proclaim their creed twenty twenty three as Black History Month. Date it on at Talon, Connecticut, this twenty fourth day of January twenty twenty three. That brings us to item five, which is public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within jurisdiction of town council for a two minute limit. If you're on Zoom, you hit star nine or the raise hand function. Or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Going once. Going twice. Three times, we'll move to item six, public hearing items, which are our number. Seven A reports for boards and committees responsible for the council. Firehouse subcommittee met last week. We went over the budget and timeframe. The completion at the latest from Bedway, we was March of twenty twenty four, but they're moving it right ahead. I believe public safety and majority of the equipment out of the building and the apparatuses were being done this week. Is that right, Megan?
Yeah.
Okay. And that is it for the fire subcommittee. Arba. Actually, I do want to do, or it's all pass first.
Whatever you want to do. We had our initial meeting last night. Where we held an executive session. We had a preliminary discussion with Langin. And we're asking where to go next. And what steps to take forward. So not we're continuing our discussions.
Then then I'll answer, Arba.
Sure. So this Thursday, we have a meeting in January twenty sixth at four thirty. We're just going to be discussing new business update of public works vehicles, update some grants. Project manager and the GL host, the eight day event discussion, a more transparent way to be able to show the public what we're working on. And just our being one of the spreadsheet that we discussed, Brian and I, a couple of weeks ago, I don't even know.
Sounds good.
I mean, did I? I'm sorry. Sorry. Did I miss anything? No, no, no.
All right. That brings us to seven B reports of town council liaisons. I'll start left. So Katie. Council member.
I haven't had any meetings. I attended the Board of Ed meeting two weeks ago where Dr. Willett rolled out his proposed budget. Sounds like they have a lot of discussions to do there. I wasn't able to make it to the budget workshops last week, so. I heard those were. There weren't a lot of community members there. But they are gonna buckle down on budgets.
Yeah. Councilor Khan.
Nothing to report.
Sure you can.
Yes, W P C A met on the seventeenth and Public Force Director reported that on Christmas night, one of the pumps on the old post road station failed. The pipe split and I believe it was from freezing. That pump is currently operational, but they're waiting for Connecticut water to repair. Okay, so yeah, a generator was added and then at a different pump station, there is a water pump that blew and that pump has since been replaced. For new business, they had three new connections on Woodside Road off of Old Post. And then the last thing they talked about was they're just waiting for a contractor to start pump, to start a pump installation behind the piece while that was it.
I had a water commission meeting last week on the eighteenth. Nothing major to report there. Otherwise, Conservation Commission, I believe, meets on the ninth, which is the same date as our capital budget hearings. I'll be unable to attend that meeting. Councilor B. Jim.
So I had Highland, Highland Beast and Highland Health District meeting. Was actually really short meeting. We didn't do a whole lot. Talked about budget. The new budget that they're going to be looking at coming forward, some changes in reimbursement rates for the towns. Nothing substantial though from a health perspective. Also had a P C C meeting where we did a debrief of the tree lighting ceremony. And actually kind of started kicking around the idea of possibly expanding it a little because we had more and more people actually coming to these community events. And it's been nice to have, but makes us think maybe we should kind of expand it and do something more, kind of along the lines, like even if we had like the food truck thing kind of there for that event also with hot stuff for people to get. Also talked about, we started talking already about the Memorial Day parade and what they're going to be doing with that. Possibility of getting the governor's horse guard this year, which we haven't had that in the last couple of years. So that would be a good one. We used to have it, don't have it, trying to get it back. And also started to talk about partnering with Rec. Doing like a summer event, like a summer movie, something that Bruce is looking at doing, something that they would like to do, kind of expand more community opportunities. And I did tell them that I would put a plug in for them. That if we want to continue to have more community events and larger community events, then their budget should probably be a little bit more than six thousand dollars. Not significantly more. They literally said like maybe five hundred dollars and we could get a whole nother event. So I think that's kind of something that we should think about from a community building perspective. You have not said.
Thank you, Councilor Jim. Councilor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That had the Veterans Recognition Commission meeting last week that several things were discussed, including the the memorial and about expanding it, that the one thing that we are looking for, that they are looking for is that they've gone out to bid on just to get a price range for redoing the memorial and expanding it in the way that they've, that they had envisioned. And that they, they haven't received any, any actual responses yet. There was one person that gave them a ballpark, but they haven't received a firm, firm response yet. That I asked them to give me that information so I could possibly follow up on some of the companies that they've, they've solicited. But this is going out and I'd be making that, that request as well. You know, as a town council member, is for anybody within the town that, that would be interested in looking at the proposal as far as a company willing to work with them on it, that that will be willing to do work and is looking for work on it, that they are, they're hoping they're looking for anyone that would be willing to provide a bid. They're going to be actually presenting a full request proposal and they'll be sending it through through the town manager's office eventually for that R F P, if it does come to fruition. That the V R C also prepared its first ever official, I think, budget proposal that they'll be submitting. In fact, I just sent before this meeting out to Brian and Lisa for them to review that. Reviewing and there was a lot of work done on it by all the members there where they reviewed not only the state statutory requirements, but also V A statutory requirements, reacting as the town veterans service organization. So the budget reflects what, what those actual, some of those obligations are. That they also have prepared their own commission bylaws. Again, first ones that they've had since their inception and that they've actually looked in, believe it'll be up for vote next time around. And then that's, that's all I have.
Thanks for the question. Were you guys able, many be able to talk about you know, as much as submit something to the upper subcommittees that that may be a good idea? Or they didn't talk about it?
They did. I know that, that I arrived probably about twenty minutes late, so I don't know if there was something specifically discussed. I could follow up with them, but I know that they were looking at trying to rather than taking funding from, from something else that they were looking to see if they'd be able to find some companies that would be willing to donate their services or at least get a price that they can go out and possibly go for donations or something like that. That is in the estimates they've gotten so far have been in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So if that's something that would be a huge lift, if it was a fundraising event. And also one of the other things, one other thing I forgot to mention that there was a just tentative discussions that was brought forward by both the Democratic and Republican town committees about possibly pairing with the V R C for some functions as like a fundraiser and also it would be something that it would provide meals, but also providing meals to veterans that may be not able to afford it as part of this function. So, which are, again, I think keeping in moving forward and trying to work together. I think that was outstanding, the proposal that was brought through. Thank you.
Councilor Newt.
Yeah, wait, my computer. So yes, so there's a few council members at the Board of Ed on one twenty two. You know, Katie said they're starting to get into the weeds a bit, but right now it's a five point nine two percent increase. Most of it is contractual, so they have a lot of work to do and I think they do good work. Bring something to the council. One other thing, the music department. They get acknowledgement from Senator Murphy's Office regarding the best communities for music education that's submitted by the NAMM Foundation. So they also have a Adams there and, you know, a few other music instructors. Do you know, great department there. Monday night meeting, the mental health disability, mental health task force was canceled due to weather. So Jonathan and I got a name off. And then on January nineteenth, mission with people with disabilities, they welcomed the new member, Ron Friedman. And then Representative C X Special Education Advisory Council, Heather McCann came and talked about their program and how they support parents that have children on I E Ps and it's pretty new and I know Heather's on and it seems pretty exciting and she's been a big advocate for the schools. And we covered the office staff, let me see if I'm I sent anything. Yeah. And Sammy and I did also go to the Board of Education Workshop last week with the administrators. Again, like Katie said, it was really nobody there and it was honestly quite disappointing seeing that's a big budget. Part of our budget and nobody was really there to ask the administrators questions. So but Sammy and I go on full benefit of asking things because of the time. So and they, that seemed right Sammy, that the administrators totally understand that you can't really ask that much this year. So so that's all we have.
Thank you. That brings us to eight new business, eight point one is presentation and discussion of the twenty twenty two and the twenty twenty three annual comprehensive financial report. A C F R and we have Vanessa Rosito with us tonight.
Correct. And as you know, every year we have, as we're required to have a financial audit. And again, Lisa Hancock led that, our assistant with the audit and the town of Talon got another great report and I know I believe she's already received an award for this, this year's audit. So do I have that accurate, Lisa? Mute, buddy.
Actually, the award is for last year's audit. We just got it. And there'll be a press release and all that. Once we're ready to get it out there, but this one, we have submitted the request for consideration for the award as we have done each year.
Great. So Lisa, are you ready to walk us through the audit?
Actually, I'll introduce Vanessa Rosito. She is our partner on the account from Clifton Larson and Allen Auditor, C P A Burn. And I'll let her put her presentation on. You should be able to share, Vanessa.
I will give it a shot here. Let's see. Share. And then okay, can everybody see the presentation?
All good.
And you can hear me okay? Yes. Great. So again, my name is Vanessa Rosito. I'm a principal at Clifton Larson Allen. Thank you for having me tonight. I just have a short presentation that goes through the deliverables. Just kind of high level and I'll entertain questions at the end. Okay, so as far as the agenda, I'm going to talk about the terms of the engagement. Executive summary of the engagement. I'll go over some high level financial highlights from the financial statements. Talk about the federal and state single audit, which is related to the grants that the town receives. Go over the management letter and the required communication to those charged with governance, which is this board. And then I'll end with upcoming Gatsby pronouncements. So as far as the terms of the engagement, we were engaged to express opinions on whether the town's basic financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also express an in relation to opinion on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, which is your federal and state single audits. With respect to those audits, we also expressed an opinion on the compliance related to the grants that we test. And we provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And lastly, on internal control over compliance related to the federal and state single audit. As far as the executive summary, the results of the audit, we have issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. We did not have any findings reported on internal control over the financial statements. So this is basically a clean opinion. It's the highest form of an opinion that you can receive. It means that everything in your financial statements is correctly stated in accordance with our accounting standards. With respect to the federal single audit, again, a clean opinion on the financial statements and on and no findings reported on any of the programs that we tested. Similarly, clean opinion on the state single audit with respect to the state programs that we tested and no compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal control. We did have a management letter, just suggestions for strengthening your internal controls, which I will go over following this. As far as the financial highlights, this is a summary of the government wide financial statements. This table can be found in the management's discussion and analysis in the financial statements. There's three different bases of accounting in the financial statement. So this shows the full accrual basis of accounting. It takes your fund financial statements and brings them to full accrual, so adds the capital assets of the town and all the long term debt of the town and pension and but you don't have pension, sorry, your O P E B obligations. So just looking at governmental activities, governmental activities are the general fund and special revenue funds of the town. Your assets from twenty one to twenty two have increased from a hundred and eighty one million to about a hundred and ninety million. Liabilities increased slightly from sixty million to sixty two million. You did have as far as your non-current liabilities, you did have just a payment on your long term debt. You didn't issue any new long term debt. And then the total net position of governmental activities did increase from one hundred and nineteen point seven million to a hundred and twenty four point four million. There's two other categories on this presentation, deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources. This is strictly a Gatsby term, so you will only see this in a government financial statement. This has to do mainly with your O P E B plan rather than recognizing any volatile changes in any assumptions in, from the actuarial report. They are brought onto the balance sheet and then amortized on a more, you know, smooth, smooth basis. Going over to the business type activities, these are the water and sewer funds of the town. Really nothing to note from twenty one to twenty two, your assets, liabilities, and net position have stayed pretty constant from last year to this year. As far as the governmental funds of the town presented here are the major funds of the town, which is the general fund and the capital projects fund. The smaller funds are aggregated together into this third column, non-major governmental funds. So the general fund had a small decrease in fund balance from last year to this year. I'm looking sort of at the bottom of the slide. Of four hundred and twenty one point eight thousand. So your fund balance at the end of the year of the general fund is twelve point four three eight million. Capital projects fund balance decreased seven point eight million from a positive one point eight million to negative five point nine. And this is very common in a capital projects fund because the capital projects, if you will, are ongoing. And the financing will come in, in, you know, in twenty twenty three or later years in the form of long term debt. So this happens quite frequently that there's a negative fund balance. In the non-major governmental funds column, there was a small increase in fund balance of four hundred and fifty six thousand. So overall, you have fund balances of your governmental funds of thirteen point one two eight million. Just some more information about the general fund. The total fund balance was twelve point four million. Of that amount, the committed amount is a little north of a million dollars. The assigned category has eight hundred and ninety three thousand of encumbrances and two hundred and sixty eight thousand to balance the twenty twenty three budget. Leaving unassigned fund balance of ten point two million. This is the budget to actual presentation of the general fund. In this statement, we present the original legally adopted budget. The next column presents the final budget after any transfers or additional appropriations. That column is compared to the actual results column, and then you can see the variance column at, at the end. So as far as revenues, revenues came in a little north of a million dollars over budget. Property taxes were about five hundred and forty five thousand over budget. Federal and state grants, two hundred and eleven over budget, charges for services, three hundred and forty thousand over budget. And just like every other municipality, pretty much investment income came in under budget and then just a small variance in other revenues. As far as expenditures, expenditures in total came in ninety thousand dollars under budget. So you also did budget to use one point three three nine eight five nine of fund balance. I'm looking in the final budget column. Sort of towards the end, but you didn't need to do that because the revenues came in, you know, significantly over budget. Property tax collections during fiscal twenty two were ninety nine point ten percent compared to ninety nine point zero four in the prior year. So small increase. And then your net O P E B liability, which are the benefits that you pay to retirees was one point six million, which is very small compared to a lot of my other clients. And it's about fifty percent funded. And on to the federal and state single audit. Federal awards spent by the town of Talon were two point eight four million. We are required to test certain programs based upon thresholds and risk. So we tested the child nutrition cluster at the Board of Education. We issued a clean opinion on compliance and internal control over that program. And then for the state single audit, the town spent eighteen point seven million dollars of, of state awards. We tested three programs, family resource centers, town aid road, and local capital improvement. Again, clean opinion on the compliance and no internal control findings in the state single audit. And then we did have one comment in the management letter with respect to the Board of Education. There was like a three part comment about various funds not being updated at the Board of Education. A couple of purchases were made before the purchase order was issued. And then there was not adequate support for one of the expenses. So of course, our recommendation is just to, you know, improve the controls at the Board of Education to ensure that these things are corrected in the next fiscal year. We are required to communicate certain things to those charged with governance. There was a letter that was issued along with the deliverable, so I'm just going to summarize what that letter said. We did have a new standard this year, which was Gatsby eighty seven entitled leases. This standard required the town to, if you will, take the operating leases of the town and treat them similar to capital leases. So put the asset on the balance sheet and the liability also on the balance sheet. So the town now has a lease receivable on their balance sheet in the general fund. And certain capital leases didn't meet, quite meet the, the definition according to Gatsby eighty seven. They're more similar to finance arrangements. So those were re-characterized. In addition, the town has various estimates that we consider to be significant estimates, which is very common. So we are just required to look at the calculation of these significant estimates because they could be subject to management bias. Management could overstate or understate them to, if you will, you know, control the results of the year. So we're, we have to look a little closer at, at these estimates. So the three estimates that the town had were the useful lives of capital assets to calculate accumulated depreciation. The net O P E B liability, which the town utilizes an actuary to calculate that, but it's based upon managements, managements. but it's based upon management's assumptions. And then lastly, the allowance for doubtful accounts unreceivable. So we looked at all three of those and they were found to be reasonable. We did not have any disagreements with management. Management did not consult with other accountants. We did not have any difficulties in performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements and no independence issues. And then lastly, what everybody's been waiting for, the laundry list of upcoming GASB standards. GASB is very busy. They, you know, we went through the lease standard this year. In fiscal '23, there's a standard very similar to the lease standard, which is standard 96, which is the last one in this slide. Basically requiring the same thing for subscription-based technology arrangements. So any kind of software subscriptions that the town has, you're going to have to analyze those and see if they need to be capitalized on the financial statements. I don't think that statement 91 or 94 will affect the town. And then in '24 and '25, Statement 99, which is an omnibus, it's various kind of cleanup issues or just kind of making things more clear for previously issued GASB standards. Statement 100 has to do with counting changes and error corrections. And then in 2025, GASB is going to change the way that compensated absences are recorded. So that will affect the town, but that's a couple of years out. And that is it. I will stop sharing and answer any questions you all have.
Any questions for councilors?
I'm sorry, the only thing I missed writing down is the errors, the three recommendations for the Board of Education purchased. Or can you go through those again, please?
So there were, let me get the letter here. So there were, there were a couple of funds at the Board of Education not being updated to reflect the activity in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in essence, the year was sort of closed early and activity after June 30th was not accounted for. That was part of the issue. The second part of it was purchases being made before a purchase order was issued. So purchase orders are important, as you all know, as a very significant control in a municipality to make sure that, that you don't go over budget. And then the third thing was there was a payment made without sufficient support. So no, no, how shall I say? You know, third-party invoice that was explaining why, you know, what the, the amount was for and not a lot of detail on it.
I just want to say, I don't think the councilors have this. I don't have it in my.
Lisa, I got a letter stating exactly that.
We have this one.
The management letter was to be shared with management, but it wasn't to go to like the Board of Education Town Council. So those letters were not shared with the Town Council or the Board of Education, just with the management staff, being the Town Manager, myself, Superintendent Schools, and the Business Manager over at the Board of Education. Now, I can say, and I mean, I have no issue sharing. If anyone wants to see it, we can certainly get the copy over to you. With that said, a lot of those concerns were addressed prior to the management comments even coming out by the superintendent and the new business manager who is there now. Is making sure that a lot of these procedures are put in place. All the internal controls are in place. My understanding, I think they did get the documentation. And you can correct me if I'm wrong Vanessa, but I think for that item that the, there was weak documentation. They were able to provide it after the fact from, from other files. There was some communication issues with the prior business manager. So like I said, a lot of things have been resolved and I don't foresee it happening in the future with the new administration that's in place as well.
So I would ask that we do get a copy of this. And I guess my question then is, at that point Vanessa, do you just make recommendations for what you found? And, and that goes over to assuming, Brian, we basically have fiscal responsibility for the actual spend into the Board of Ed to ensure that this doesn't happen again. Because I want to say in my five plus years on here, I think we've had twice now, the Board of Ed has come up in the management letter for recommendations and issues.
So, so yes, I'll answer that. I mean, we're recommending that the Board of Education review their controls and procedures and develop improvements. And I will agree with what Lisa said with respect to the, I mean, you can't really, subsequently you couldn't do anything about the first two because that's just going to have to be seen in the next year's audit. But we were able, or Board of Ed personnel, Hiram, was able to kind of do some investigation into the third item. And we were able to gain comfort with it, but it just didn't exist without a lot of additional questioning. So, and Lisa's right, I think they're on the way to correcting a lot of these things, just from my conversations with him too.
So I guess my next question is for you, Brian and Lisa. Do you have any oversight to that? Is there anything from a town and every perspective that you do to ensure that we don't have these things kind of happening at an audit? When you see numerous Board of Ed and managed funds not being accurately updated, that's concerning.
Was a concern to me immediately. And concern regarding other things in my discussions with Lisa and my discussions with the superintendent. It was implied that the previous financial manager was the likely cause of much of that and that the new financial manager has much better practices. And hence Lisa's saying that she doesn't anticipate this happening in the future. But our role is not to play crystal ball. Our role is to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I do have confidence in that, that this was amended prior to even that letter coming or at least explained. So I have confidence it won't happen again.
The rest of the questions, I have or more for Lisa? So I think do we hold those?
Yay, I won the jackpot.
Miss me Lisa.
Expected it. What you got?
Do you, I don't know, do we need to keep Vanessa on after then? Like, should we do questions for Vanessa and then handle questions for Lisa or?
Yeah, are there any questions directly for Vanessa regarding your presentation? Before we kick it off to Lisa and Ryan? All right, I'm seeing any Vanessa, so thank you again for your work for the council. And we appreciate all your work.
All right, thank you very much. If there's anything else after the meeting, just please reach out to me.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a great night.
Good night Vanessa.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Okay. Um, actually, it's not a hot theme. I have a follow-up.
Yeah, your question, do you mind if I?
I'm looking at the superintendent's proposed budget. And this proposed budget includes personnel reductions, blah, 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 including the financial accountant position at the superintendent's office being, being removed. Will that impact the, you know, fiscal stability of that office? If we know there have been previous problems? I know this isn't the final budget, but just kind of tying things together here.
Well, obviously getting rid of staff would, no one wants to get rid of staff. And if we lose numbers, it could, it could impeach the quality coming out of that office. That could be saber-wavered or waiting at this point.
Yes.
So again, our job isn't to play crystal ball. We want, our, our own financial stability and the product that we put out of our own financial office would be much diminished if I were to lose Lisa. I promise you that. So, even Chris, so obviously.
But you're not proposing, or we haven't seen a proposed budget that would downsize those positions, so.
No.
Just kind of throwing it out there as a concern. If we're concerned about the fiscal operations at Board of Ed, are you, can, are you further concerned if they downsize as proposed?
Who are you asking the question to? Okay, I'm sorry. You know, knowing the new individual who has taken over the position, he's got a very strong sense of accounting and the internal controls and procedures and, and accounting rules that need to be in place, which makes me feel very comfortable. I am not, I was not aware that they were eliminating that position because he was in that position before and has now moved up to a position called Chief Financial Officer. I am not sure if maybe they redesign the business manager position and maybe put some of the other duties on somebody else. I, I was, I'm not aware of the details of how they've structured this new position, taking the place of the business manager. But I, I do feel that, the gentleman's name is Hiram, his first name. And I do feel that he can manage all the accounting and the finances and make sure that everything is in place as it should be. He certainly has bounced things off of me. I try to share my experience with him. He does have experience as well. As far as the other things that are required in that office, I, I think it just all depends on how the superintendent has structured it. And I don't have that information.
Thank you.
I, I certainly think they need help, but if they've got it structured in a way where Hiram can get the accounting done the way it should be, you know, I feel he can handle that.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me interject. So Lisa, I have a ton of questions this year because I think this is like year six. I think I'm getting the hang of it now.
Have a ton or you do have a ton?
I don't.
Oh, good.
It's going to be a long meeting tonight. And I said, just because I said that, that means I lied. You know, like it's, it's going to be worse. It's going to be long.
She got so, I got a lot more than.
Lou's going to pick up my slack. So going through the revenue overview here, I see that we, we collected more taxes than we thought. The $188,000, is that due to like new, new builds or improvements? Is that through that sort of that, that chain?
The $188,000 did have to do with, when we create the mill rate in, in the budget, we take in certain projections as part of the grand list of things that may be coming on, things that may be coming off. And what happened was there may not have been as many reductions or increases that we had anticipated or amendments through the Board of Assessment appeals. Because there's, there's two sessions through them where they can reduce the grand list even after the budget has been adopted. So we put various assumptions in place and you can never guesstimate exactly what it's going to be. So that resulted in about $188,000 in excess revenues. You know, more things coming on the books than we had anticipated. Some coming off and so forth. Did tighten that up in the next, in the budget that we're currently in? A lot of those adjustments, we tried to be more cautious to, or less conservative, but not to a point where we could, you know, hurt the operating system and the cash flow.
Were any of those homes crumbling foundations coming back on the books?
We did have, we did have quite a few coming back on the books. We also had some come off. I don't have the exact numbers, but yes, some of that was included in there.
That's good to know. The motor vehicle supplemental tax that we're over about 220,000. Brian, this might be a question for you too, both of you. But with the legislation that was passed from the MSRP valuation, have you guys taken that? Are you looking at that in comparison? Because this here was obviously driven by the inflated, inflated values, which everything that I read everywhere is that they're crashing down quick. They're coming down very fast, so.
Not in town. Now, let's put it this way, we're, we have not completely finalized the grand list, but the, the grand list for motor vehicles is up again this year.
Is that new purchases or valuable?
Both, but there are a lot of new purchases as well. So, I mean, I was happy to see that, but you're right. Eventually, depending on how the legislation goes, if by using the, in the next, I think it's next fiscal, next grand list where it impacts it, once you start doing that, certainly, unless people are buying new vehicles, it's going to depreciate every year rather than fluctuating with the market value like it does now. And I think time will tell. We, many other towns, our surrounding towns have actually seen reductions in their motor vehicle list or their motor vehicle supplemental. Talon, every year where we were trying to, you know, be conservative and reduce it, thinking it's gotta, people have got to stop buying cars. Our supplemental list just kept increasing. So that again, also increased what we collected based on what we estimated.
Okay, the interest income. I know there was a large shift with, from our regular about 2% down to 0.1%. Are you seeing anything that's telling you that trend is going to continue to stabilize, increase, decrease?
The trend is definitely increasing, more than we had ever anticipated turning around. We're, we're seeing rates now anywhere between 2 and 4%. Investing in legally allowed state statutory investments, but we've really been gaining some interest income this year.
So this was a one-year flip then, the interest income losses.
It was a couple of years that we went through this. Where, I mean, it was almost as if we were paying them interest to keep our, our cash on hand. But it is starting to turn around with the economy. I think interest rates have been increasing. And we'll see what just happens with, with the feds as interest rates go forward.
Then the, the next section I wanted to look at, it said intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues were less than budgeted by 210,000. And the major impact being education, ECS. But then it looked like we got more in ECS because I know ECS was frozen for two years, which that goes away this year. There is talk of looking at a new formula, but it's not going to really positively impact Talon. But it won't negatively impact Talon either. But the 194,000, based on your note, says less. But did we receive more or less than what we planned for ECS?
We received less than what we had planned for ECS.
We did. You know why?
Yep, it had to do each year when the Board of Education has to file certain financial information through what is called an EFS system. It's an education financial system with the state. And there are certain adjustments for special education, things like that. So if they've gotten or received. And there are certain adjustments for special education, things like that. So if they've gotten or received. Um. Excess money within special ed, then sometimes that will be reduck reduced out of the ECS. It's just various, I don't know the exact formula, but the state calculates it based on the final. Um financial information from the year before and then it. Either sometimes you can get more, sometimes you can can get less. It's uh rare that I've seen us get it more based on that calculation, but that that's what the impact was. It was based on. The uh.
I guess I'm I'm just confused because your note said intergovernmental revenue revenues were less. But then it said uh we received additional ECS funding of a hundred and ninety four and.
Oh, my God.
Of an additional pilot. So the note.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm thinking of the other.
Yes, I was confused.
There was a reduction. Oh, gosh. That that is correct. The statement there is correct. I mean, don't have the paperwork written, but. The amount that we were supposed to get from ECS from the state. Um. Was supposed to be. Like three hundred and something thousand higher. Than what we put in the budget. I think I think that was the differential. And we did not get all of that because they reduced it by the amount of that. Year end calculation. So we ended up with a hundred and ninety four thousand. I apologize for that misrepresentation. Um originally, because we didn't budget the governor's number. He had put in the whole amount of ECS in his budget and then we were under the understanding that. It probably wasn't going to last, so we took the conservative approach and budgeted. The uh three hundred and seven thousand dollar reduction that we had thought was going to happen. And then what happened was the legislature. Actually approved the amount that the governor originally proposed in his budget. That number was three hundred and thirty thousand or so higher than what we had in our budget. However, with that year end calculation through the ECS formula and. Adjustments, we really instead of getting three hundred and thirty thousand, we got a hundred and ninety four thousand. And um because of those excess funds. Those funds were uh calculated based on our tax stabilization. Um ordinance and moved to that part.
Sadly, I followed all of that. I understand exactly what you're talking about.
And I do apologize for the uh.
Uh you may have, but I I followed that. I I understand what you're saying now. All right.
Okay, good.
What is the current balance of the tax stabilization fund with this infusion?
I don't have the number with me, but it's a hundred. Probably about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand. Because we had, we had pretty much used the balance of it in last year's budget. As a hundred and ten thousand is what we had when we started the year and and moved that into the general fund. Now it's replenished with the excess uh state revenues that we received. And um. It went between there and capital non. I think capital non recurring got about fifty thousand, forty something thousand.
Okay, uh last question I have is in the paragraph regarding encumbrances. I'm not a fan of how we do encumbrances because it inflates final numbers and then, you know, we see something like this where a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Is canceled. Do we know what year of those hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of encumbrances reflects? Is it multiple? Is it one? Is it?
A majority, I don't have actual years in place, but a majority of them would be from the previous year. There's um the Board of Education rarely has any that are carried over more than more than two years. The town, depending on what the um. The situation is, may have some from older years, but again, I've been making department heads. You know, push to get those things finalized if there's. Anything. There's very few, but if there was anything out there, they're either going to be done or canceled or you're going to find the money elsewhere. That's basically where I was last year with that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know when Mike Rosen came on, we pushed really hard to kind of stop with the. Encumbering balances at the end of year to hold them for X amount of years. So um will the prior year's budget? Be reflective of the cancellation of encumbrances for the total spend from the Board of Ed? Because that's one of the numbers that's in their plan every year. Their budget every year is prior year actual spend. So does that account for the hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that did not get spent?
No, um.
So those statements.
Thirteen to the to the board of Ed.
But it says from cancellation of prior year encumbrances for the Board of Ed and the town.
Oh, 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 okay. No, that was for. Ex um encumbrances that were in the year before carried into last fiscal year.
Those two years.
Right, it would have been. Right, the the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Would have had encumbrances. Those would have gone into the next year. And they were expenses as of on a budgetary basis, June twenty one, okay? Now, if they didn't. Say if they had a cancel orders and couldn't get it or came in less than what they had originally anticipated. Then those purchase orders are canceled. They do not hit their expense account in any manner. That money goes back to the general fund as a um as a revenue.
Well, yeah, I yeah, I I get that, but my my point is we don't restate. So if you look at. Any of the budget documents that we look at, whether it be the town or the Board of Ed, it shows prior year actuals. So it's an inflated number by a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from whatever year. So we're not going back and re stating what our actual end of year balances are. We're just releasing it into the.
Well. On a budgetary basis, no, we would not do that. However, part of what we do under generally accepted accounting rules. With the modified accrual basis, those statements reflect. The ins and outs and and the ex uh expenditures. With the encumbrances in and out as they should.
Okay.
But you're not going to see a budgetary basis ever adjusted.
Okay. Um I get that. I understand gap stuff, but um I I I think it's something that. Somehow should be accounted for somewhere in the budget if we're encumbering money and not spending it.
Well, well, it is. I mean, it's all, it's all in.
Most people don't understand gap schedules and they're not looking at the gap, the gap, you know, filing and all of that stuff, so. We're showing an actual that. Is inflated by a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is used to then build a budget for the next year. So just. I think, you know, from the public's perspective to understand that, um they're not going to pull up gap. They're not going to pull up your gap um worksheets and such.
The the other side of um part of the comments that the auditor had made. Was how how the year was closed out and the way the Board of Education was doing it was rather than having any other. Actual bills that come in, they just encumbered everything that was ordered at June thirtieth. And that's what got expensed. It wasn't like. Encumbering just to be able to have money to the following year. That's not what the case was. So now what should be happening going forward. Is that they will hold their financial system open longer, just like the town does. We will process bills right through the end of July. Um sometimes the beginning of August for all the actual um items that we receive by June thirtieth. They'll get charged back as an actual expense. So the only thing left would be orders that we just couldn't get in. In time that we're still waiting on and those would be the ones that would hit the budget. I'm uh assuming and hoping. That that's what is going to have on the Board of Education's side because Hiram and I are both on board with that process. We've discussed it and he is in total agreement of it happening that way. Now, I can't tell you how the Board of Ed will do things. I can only tell you how my side will do things, but I think they're on the path of. Making sure it's done through accounting, appropriate accounting methods.
Thank you. See, that wasn't that bad.
Thank you. That's good.
Okay, I've got question one A. No, I I I know, I appreciate. No, that was a great, great explanation. Thank you.
I have a question about sports leagues. Uh this is. At least the second year I've seen it, perhaps it went back further than that even uh where uh there. The leagues have been approved for a lower payment. Um do we know if that will continue? Um into next fiscal year or are we anticipating? Full payment from the sports leagues?
I haven't looked at that yet.
Okay.
And I heard I think under Rose, I think there was a reduction, I think in part.
And my uh sort of policy question is, since this, you know. We have forgiven this for a couple of years now. You know, is it time to revise and restructure how the sports leagues um? Make payments into the town, you know, as part of their field usage. That's more a policy question than anything else.
Yeah, it's certainly something to be looked at. And right now, the sports leagues have had some um. Fundraising issues over the past couple of years because of COVID. I think they're starting, from my understanding, to start get to get back. On their feet. Um. Certainly, it's, you know, the ones who are using the field should be making appropriate payments. We did have a um. Structure and procedure set up and a dollar amount that they were supposed to be contributing. Some leagues are using it much less now than they had in the past. So, you know, it it certainly can be looked at, maybe through the Recreation Commission, but the the majority of those funds. Were basically to help offset the cost of debt of that artificial turf field. That's um that that's the artificial turf field.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's that's what their payments were for and. For the most part throughout the years, they had made their payments. Um prior to that, I don't unless because it might have been before me, but I don't think they were participating. With uh payments to the town before that artificial turf field was put in place. I could be wrong. It could have been before me. But I don't remember it starting until that turf field.
Uh in question. Hey, when they built cross farms, um part of the deal of building cross farms was that uh well. Like the soccer club was going to pay for the irrigation system going, but then there was going to be ongoing. Um field usage kind of the stuff because we built that major complex there. In baseball too, because they got a big piece of that and also, you know, yeah, football. So I think it's it's. It was around that which had to be. Oh, my God, my name, well, God, Ali, all of my kids said a cross farm.
So so my question then as a policy question is, do we need to talk? Do we need to think about revising that? I I don't know the answer, but.
Um and it's been steady at five thousand dollars is what they were supposed to do, so. Might be, like you said.
Uh that was my only question. Thank you, Lisa. This is very thorough and uh. If I read it very slowly, I can follow along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other questions for council members? Hopefully it's an award winning, another award winning report. So thank you again for all that you do, Lisa.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
That brings us to eight point two, which is a consideration of resolution authorizing town manager Brian J. Foley to apply for and accept. On the other talent valid, a grant for the assistance to firefighters grant program to our home security. Federal Emergency Management Agency in relation to public safety at the discretion of the fire chief. Now manager is authorized to enter into an exit and execute any criminal agreements, contracts and documents necessary to obtain that grant. Should the town be selected for a grant award.
So uh this is a the the very early stages of a grant where I need permission to uh apply. At the discretion of the fire chief means we haven't figured out uh what exactly we want to apply for yet as Megan's gonna. Uh weed through a lot of the uh fine print and what we can apply for and whether or not we're eligible. Uh but this is just a, we needed to get this in ASAP before we could start working with the fire department. There's a lot of uh internal investigation we would have to do to determine what. We can apply for, whether we're a candidate or not. Is that accurate, Meg?
Yes.
Are there any questions from council members? I know it's listed, there's bail out kits listed, but obviously it's up to the discretion for other potential projects.
No, I had a question. Is this a similar one that we applied for like? I just applied for a year ago or no? Yes.
Yeah, I just reread it. You're right. Uh we did apply for this in twenty eighteen, uh but we did not receive a reward.
So um bail out kids is is essentially a placeholder?
Yes.
Okay, and if that uh if the grant is awarded, I see that it could potentially cost the town eighty one hundred dollars. So if the grant is awarded, would that come back to the council for discussion?
Thank you.
Um so we don't know what the class share is going to be because we don't have a class. Um so that's just dividing out the number of awards or the total amount allocated. Um it would probably, that would be the maximum probably award amount. Uh we depend entirely on what they decide they want to apply for and how much that costs.
We would have a role in what that decision is, right?
Um I.
Yes.
Yes, I would imagine.
We couldn't, this is just to apply. This is not to accept the grant. Once we apply and then if we get it, then we have to come to the council to say. Go ahead and buy it or don't.
Correct. Very good. Thanks.
So, oh, is it? I'm sorry. So if we give you the okay to apply, are we doing so with the understanding? That the town's responsibility for anything you apply for wouldn't exceed eighty one hundred dollars? Or?
I don't think we know that.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Meg?
Yeah, we don't. Okay. Okay.
But if I am right, possibly, happens occasionally, um the eighty one hundred dollars would come out of the ambulance. Fund, correct? Like the the fire stations, their fund for equipment and such.
I would have to look at the what we can spend. What strings were attached to aid of the grant and the definitions of that fund and what we can use it on. And it's dependent largely on what we go after.
Huge reasonable, but Lisa Beck.
Did you have a, I was here. I just, I just shut my voice off and everything.
I was just asking the the grant for the um for the the fire stuff. If if. If we do get the grant for this, the balance would most likely come from um the ambulance and fire fund. Possibly.
I I think it's all going to depend on what the grant award is for. Um normally that fund, the capital fund is used for capital equipment. So if they. They do get. The award for some sort of purchase for capital equipment and fire gear or whatever. They get, then we could come back to the town council and ask for a supplemental project appropriation. To fund um with some of those funds. If it's something, say if it's only a two thousand dollars, we might try to find the funds within. The town budget if there were any savings. Um for that, it you know, it just all depends on what the final numbers come out to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I haven't seen none. I'm going to motion to approve resolution outline at eight point two.
So.
So my counsel you to check, seconded by Counselor Luba. I was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Bring us to eight point three, which is a consideration of resolution authorizing Brian Foley to apply for accept on the other town with an equivalent cemetery account. A reference, the cemetery account, and that the town manager authorized to enter, to execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents necessary to obtain said grants.
Again, this is permission for us to, uh, go after and seek a grant, uh, to aid in our, our cemetery management. This is something that we've done commonly, uh, in the town of town, uh, through DPW and, uh, uh, Director Lappin. Megan, is that accurate?
Yes.
That's usually what we get every year. It's kind of, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just to kind of thank you for bringing more grant opportunities to us. It's great to see that you back Megan and bringing so much into us already. So thank you.
She, she's doing great. Um, it, it's, it's refreshing to have, uh, there's a lot more research, uh, going on now and she, it's ten out of ten, like I said, the last meeting on, uh, her, uh, getting up to speed. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Seeing other discussion, I have a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point three. No, but Councilor, seconded by Counselor Nuccio. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Eight point four appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. We have a DRC alternate and reappointment to the Talon Water Commission. Uh, they've changed a motion to approve those as outlined in eight point four A and eight point four B.
So moved.
By Counselor Luba, is there a second? Thank you, my health community to check. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Item nine is bold business, which we have none. Item ten, report of the town manager. Any updates for you, Ryan, outside of the, yesterday?
Yeah, it, it just storm management, uh, last couple of days, uh, and we look forward, uh, tomorrow as well. I thought it went fairly smooth. Unless you guys heard otherwise, uh, I have a cadence now with, uh, public safety. Uh, state police, fire department, our emergency management director and as well as, uh, Director Lab and uh, I'm sure I'm becoming an annoyance to him. I don't, I don't know what the cadence was in prior, you know, since he's been here. But I want to know the weather. I want to know the plan, uh, good, bad or otherwise with fluctuations in the weather, uh, and, and it's working out. I think, okay.
I think, and I think a lot of people have also appreciated the new Atlas one app, I think in tandem with public safeties. E-blasts and other notifications, they think it's been the other one, two punch for alerts. Oops.
Get on Atlas one. I meant to do that this week.
I haven't, I've been like, it pops up. It's great.
Yeah.
Can I ask the other question?
Outside of, outside of yesterday, yes, of course.
Um, I guess two things, since I brought up, I must have the safer grant on my mind. It never formally got anything that it was not successful. So I'm not sure if anyone else on the council.
I paused you and asked, is that accurate? Did we get, did we get anything back from the government saying this is why we didn't get the safer grant?
Not the why. I don't believe they're sharing, um, any sort of individual feedback. So we did get a letter that said we didn't, we were not awarded.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Is there an opportunity that the fire department might be able to apply for that? Right? Have to come back again.
Is it up again?
When it comes back around, yeah, they can, they can reply.
Okay.
There is a greater, not to dismerge anyone else's previous efforts, but Megan is doing a very thorough job.
Oh, I'm sure she is. I was just, it was a go over a year ago and I only heard through the grid, I didn't, I didn't even know we didn't. Yeah, so I mean. I didn't even know.
Lisa, that, that letter you sent on the denial of a grant, did somebody recently just ask me for that and I sent it out? Was it someone on council or, do you remember that, Lisa?
Yeah.
The safer we're talking about?
I think it was, and I don't remember who asked for it. May have been John, getting it to you. Um, but I know that he was having Frank Paukow who helped write that grant, um, reach out to this, to the government to try to find out where some of the weaknesses were. My understanding, it was very strong. However, there were other communities who were in a less, lesser financial condition or whatever. And Talon was appeared, appeared to be in a better financial situation for regarding the need. So I know he was going to reach out to figure out how we can try to show our need in a stronger, um, version compared to other communities who, you know, don't have as many financial avenues. I don't know if that's, I'm trying to make it in those.
And then, I, under, um, the other reports, I feel to ask for Susan, uh, the Commissioner of People with Disabilities on an update of Hopeless Sidewalks. About, do you have any further information?
Our next move would be to, is to get the engineer now to come up with a plan and basically an estimate. I'd leave it there for now.
I don't know. How much time that I can give?
No. I still have a couple political hoops to jump through with that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan, your report?
Just thank you for all the updates. It was, it's been very helpful to see updates in various places about what's going on. So thank you for that.
Right, thank you.
Bring this to, sorry, start the agenda for a second. Bring this to eleven adoption of minutes, signed agenda motion to approve minutes outlined in eleven point one and eleven point two.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Seconded, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As unanimous, uh, twelve corresponds to council.
I had, I have three emails that came in, uh, since January tenth. Uh, one regarding Talon Water, uh, one asking for the budget memo to be published and one regarding methane gas.
And then I think actually you might have one word to add on to that. If y'all got the letter from the new well advisor group.
Yes, I'm sorry. I haven't opened mine yet. Okay, so we got a letter that I haven't opened yet.
Yeah, it was from, uh, twice on his lance, because they have to either having a, a very cutting ceremony on. Yeah, I got a big email, so I initially had. Yeah. Yeah, it's on other roads.
Thank you, Steve.
We have the big town scissors or, I'm kidding.
Allen Chamber of Commerce will have the big scissors.
They do have.
Yes, 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 yeah.
On sword.
Right, and so the, about the Talon, the Talon Chambers scissors tend to fall apart. So I would not recommend being the person who does them, because if you wiggle them the wrong way, they just kind of like come apart. So. Let the business on. No scissors.
That came about prior to BP. Sorry, my daughter's on emergency, right?
All right, that brings us to item thirteen, chairperson's report. So next chair hour is Wednesday, the first. Uh, I've got a few communications to report. Jonathan Frigga from Everstore sent over a vegetation management plan for uh, twenty twenty-three, I believe about three miles over, uh, tree trimming is going to occur in the town. We got an email from the US Census Bureau about boundary annexation surveys that was completed by David Corcoran. And then a communication from a resident directly to me regarding phasing out gas and new building codes. That was referred to PDC leadership and David Corcoran, because the requests fell under their purview. Frog, we had an executive session last Wednesday, followed by an executive committee meeting. Uh, whatever the quarterly finance report, crude resolution work with Grossman Solutions for their strategic visiting, visioning exercise and receive an update on the executive directors' goals and objectives. Uh, probably be tomorrow for policy board meeting with a sustainable CP presentation, followed by executive session. Uh, then as a reminder, uh, council members, if anyone has submitted their six month review, send it over to Doug Thomas and go through the next steps of Ryan's six month review process. And then an open house email was sent to chairs and vice chairs of all the elected boards to find an agreeable date to hold the open house event. And that is it. So that brings us to item fourteen, communications and petitions from council persons.
Okay, I can't raise, I'm only one arm.
Fun thing, I think I mentioned it earlier, um, I went to the bonfire that was, I don't know, I don't know if I the TR, um, TC and the TB TC. But I, um, know a lot of town staff was involved. It was a major, definitely a community thing. And I guess I was someone's post on Facebook. All the food that was collected to the Colin Food Pantry was unbelievable. I think over like two hundred people, I think they were, pretended. It was great. It was really good and I just want to thank everybody that was involved with that. I look forward to feature ones.
Well, I thank the two town committees for such a wonderful idea and, and event. And you're correct, uh, while a lot more people dropped off and hung around, a lot of people hung around. And, uh, I do thank the Lions Club, uh, Chief Lightell was not expected to be such a big planner and we ended up leaning on him very heavily. So very thankful, uh, to him, DPW. Uh, the folks at the senior center for taking us in and we bombed them with food. Uh, it was, it was impressive. And the fire department, again, with getting the food, the boy scouts, uh, were, were great for that, everything. Um, everything went well and, uh, and now the PCC is going to put the strong on me for more money so they can handle it next year. I know, it went well. And, and I don't know if any, other, other than effort, any town dollar in there and it was great. And those of you that came, awesome. I know that everyone wanted to be there and couldn't. It was short, kind of short notice, but an eyeball on it for next year as well.
I just wanted to add one other thing, um. So Susan, the Commissioner of People with Disabilities also want to commend, um, that there was accessibility. Um, which was huge and I think a little unexpected and just small, things like that. They mean as to people that are in need, so, um.
The creativity of Chief Lightell, I guess.
Now we're never going to hear the end from him.
So that's all.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I know, everything that I've heard from people that attended, I like to echo what, uh, Colin had to say that, uh, everybody was very impressed with it. And, uh, that the, the request was that I've gotten already a handful of questions, if not more, is when can we do it again? Um, because it was just something that was a, could just be like a, a season like winter, summer type of thing. Um, just because, uh, it was, it was a great thing. Uh, that I also, on a side note, I'd like to commend again the, uh, DPW State Police uh, for their efforts over the past few days. That, uh, I was actually over at Troop C on some, uh, some work related issues, uh, last night when they were all responding and that they, uh, um, that they, uh, that, I mean, they were tied up with that, uh, fatality accident on, on eighty-four. But then, uh, the Talon Fire and Ambulance, the DPW and, and the state police all were uh, amazing. So I'd just like to commend them for that. And there was one other thing that I was going to ask. Oh, that's what it is. Um, there is also, um, regarding the, um, issue for, uh, the tangent wells and the, uh, salt task force. There is a request that if, uh, by, uh, by a number of our residents that are affected, if, um, we might be able to get, uh, like monthly updates at least, uh, for them. I know with us being now the, uh, salt task force being part of the, uh, part of the, one of the committees that would be reporting to town council, we'll get the, uh, updates every, uh, every meeting. But even if, Brian, if you could, uh, request that if you conclude that as part of your manager report on a monthly basis, just saying, this is like, you know, this is where we are, just so that they know that they're not forgotten. Because, uh, the complaints that I've gotten from, from a handful of people is that uh, the only time that they ever hear anything about it is when they start pushing an issue and then it becomes, uh, something that comes up on a, on a meeting again, where we got them periodic updates, just to let them know that they're not forgotten. Um, just like we did with the, uh, with the, uh, with the foundations. That's something I think will be a long, go a long way to, uh, showing that we do care and that we are listening to them and that it's not something that's fallen off our radar until, you know, next year. That's all I have. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Chair.
Mine is just a really stupid request, but it's the second time now. I don't know why, but I am getting spammed like crazy. Like I'm talking, I'm up to like twenty-five emails. I, I keep getting the notice.
I addressed it, right? I asked about it last time. I will ask. I did. That's why I want you to think I didn't
No, no.
Take any action, but I went in and asked. I, I will ask again. This is your town email.
My town org email. Every time, like, I, I would keep getting the thing that says your mailbox is overset. I'm like, I don't know what you want me to do.
It's a talon.gov or dot org?
It's a dot gov one, I think. Like, and, and it's like daily, I'm getting like twenty. I got Walmart gift certificate today. I'm getting like, you know, all kinds of just nonstop. I don't know how, but. I don't know the thing they can do, but it just seems to be.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
For Lisa, your hands up.
Yeah, I, um, I did, I've been getting a lot of the spam as well. And, uh, I did check into it. I had our IT staff, um, take a look at the spam filter. And they said everything is working as it should. So what, um, when you get these messages, are you using Outlook as your, your email?
Please the web.
Through exchange. There's, there's a way to go in and report it as junk.
Oh, okay.
The sender. Um, that, you know, that, that's about the only way we could try to make it stop from happening. Or if you give us a list of the email addresses that it's coming from, we could try to get them into like a blacklist.
Okay, I can do that. I'll look.
Cause I'm, I'm getting spammed right and left as well, but they said that everything is working as it should be, but things slip through.
I'll do that. I'll look for like a report button.
All right, thanks.
If anybody else that they can't, you know, they're not getting an email from me, it's because my mailbox is constantly oversight, but.
All right. Any other communication petitions? All right, seeing them to fifteen, public participation on the subject of the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. If you're online, you can hit star nine or the raise hand function, or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table. All right, going once. Going twice. And turn a motion to adjourn at eight forty-one PM.
So moved.
Second, we both seconded by Counselor Nuccio, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.